Test one, test two.
Testing, yep, it's working. Guys, you wanna test your mics?
Testing.
Test, test.
Testing.
See what, what he means. Alright. Okay, so now it's just gonna be the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of proposed hair salon head water therapy only. That's how I'll read it. Oh, the patio? Okay, 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 cool. Thank you. I don't believe so. Yeah. I'm not sure, I think this is gonna be real short. Right, right, so that's the, that's. So, so if it's not the, so if it's not the right application. Yes. That's okay.
Really?
You don't wanna fly back and forth this winter?
Right. Let me, uh. Let me call somebody really quick. No, you're good. I mean, as far as this goes, it shouldn't be an issue. Cause I mean, I mean, they would just work.
You want me to test this? Can you hear? Is it any better now? Can hear now? Oh, I don't have the new book. So then, I didn't even notice. This Groundhog Day, I'm like, what is happening? I could've not put my parking until 8:00 PM, what? It was saving five dollars.
I guess everybody ready to go?
Are you good?
Katie? Oh, okay.
We have to make sure people are speaking slowly.
Okay, is it, are we okay to start? Yeah. Everybody good? Okay. Right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. Before we take continuances and withdrawals, I do wanna make an announcement. We made this announcement in the morning session as well. The announcement is, as part of Mayor Brandon Johnson's Cut the Tape Initiative, we are excited to share that the Zoning Board of Appeals more streamlined application and hearing process. The proposed rules and forms are available for view and public comment at chicago.gov/zba. Public comment will last until July 19. For those of you who weren't present in the morning session, as you just saw, we have our newest commissioner here, Adrian Soto. We are so happy to have him here and, and, and join the, the board, so welcome, Adrian. Alright, let's take continuances and withdrawals.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioner Bruce. My name is Tim Barton, I'm with the firm of Thomas R. Reins, Attorney at Law. I'm here to ask for a continuance on one of the two cannabis business establishments that are on your agenda. Specifically case number 264-24-S. That's an application for special use for a cannabis grow facility. We are not going forward with that application today. We'd like a continuance on that.
Okay.
Until, until October, if possible.
October, okay. What's the date for October? Okay, so calendar number 264-24-S will be continued to October 18th, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Okay, and we are going ahead with 265-24-S.
Got it.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Thomas Higgit, I'm the president of, the owner of Edna Circle. And zoning has requested that we request a continuance. Would you like me to read the numbers?
I think I've got it here. 266-24-S, 267-24-S, 173-24-S, 174-24-S, and 175-24-Z?
That's, that's what I have.
Okay.
That's what I have, Chair.
And as far as, okay. Okay, calendar numbers 266-24-S, 267-24-S, 173-24-S, 174-24-S, and 175-24-Z will be continued to August 16th, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given. Counselor Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. And case number 262-24-Z, it's a record store that needs a PPA license because they were passing the hat and the city says if that's the same as charging admission. So, they had talked to the alderman first, but now he's gotten some calls and stuff, so he wants to have a meeting and he, we're gonna talk about a plan of operation. So he called me Wednesday, Alderman Chico, and asked me if I would ask for a continuance on his behalf.
Okay, and continuance to when?
Well, he didn't say, and... Oh, that's the first I heard about that, but if that's what he wants, that's what we'll do.
Okay. Okay, so calendar number 262-24-Z will be continued to September 20th, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you very much.
Counselor?
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Smith. I'm here on 180-24-S on behalf of Starbucks Corporation.
Okay, and you're seeking a continuance to when?
Either the July or the August date, depending on when your July dates fall.
July? Okay, yeah. It'd be July 19th? Is that alright for you?
19th is perfect.
Okay. So it'll be, so calendar number 180-24-S will be continued to July 19th, the 2:00 PM call. No further notice will be given. Thank you. Right, any other continuances or withdrawals before we call our first case for the afternoon? Seeing none, Victor, go ahead and call the first case.
First case, 264-24-S, 918 West Diversity Parkway.
Yeah. Good afternoon. Would both the applicant and the applicant's expert please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Musawir's expertise. Let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 260-24-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon head water therapy only. Alright, sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Cheng Zhang. I am president of the Tianyu H Group. They're located at the 918 West Diversity Parkway.
Okay, and can you tell us about the business that you're intending to open up? What, what is the, the water therapy that you're proposing?
It's the...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cheng has some issues with English. But he's from China, he's a operator there for some time. This water therapy is something that's all the rage in China, and they're bringing it across the water so that Americans can have an opportunity to take advantage of this service.
And what is water therapy?
And, and it's washing of the hair. It's just washing the hair.
Okay, so it's, it's water therapy with regard to only the head?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's not going to be any water therapy with regard to the body?
No, no other part of the body, other than the hair.
Okay. Are they also going to, is there gonna be any haircutting at, at this establishment?
No haircut.
Okay, so it's water therapy only?
Yes.
Okay, and water therapy only with regard to the head?
Yeah, and head and hair, yeah.
Right, right, okay. If, if you can, can you just, can you describe exactly like what the water therapy is?
Sorry, my English is not available.
Yeah.
But...
Best you can.
Yes. It's the, this the hair machine, just use the water, you know, it's the the thing for the relaxing for the head, you know, just the dress the hair wash and use the shampoo or something, it's the, a little bit massage for the head, yeah, I think, that's all.
Okay. Okay. And what are the hours you intend on keeping?
It's the morning 10:30 to the night, 8:30, yeah, yeah.
Is that every day?
Yeah, seven days, yes.
Are you intending on having employees?
Oh.
Any, any employees? Are you gonna hire people to work for you?
Yeah, yes.
How many?
The, the one for the front desk, for the pickup phone, the, the one for the, the washer hair, and me, the, the three, yeah, like me.
Okay, and you're a licensed massage therapist?
I have the license massage.
Okay.
I have.
Okay, but when it comes to your license as a massage therapist, you're not going to be doing any body massage in this establishment?
Yeah, I, I don't do the body massage, dress the hair, yeah.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Next case, 261-24-Z, 1642 West North Avenue.
Alright, good afternoon. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Samantha Nunez. I'm an attorney with Crook Fairchild Duarte and Barris. And I am here representing the applicant at 1642 West North Avenue LLC for their variation application at 1642 West North Avenue. To my right is Jailed Garcia. To his right is Deborah Smith. She is the applicant representative. And to her right is Michael S. Cox, who is a licensed engineer here in the state of Illinois.
Okay.
I proceed in short form?
Yes, short form.
The subject property is owned C1-2 Neighborhood Commercial District, which contains an existing 100-year-old one-story with a basement-framed-style family residence, which is the shortest building on the block face and is out of character since the majority of buildings are mixed-use, multi-story, multi-unit buildings. The applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the required minimum lot area from 3,000 square feet to 2,976 square feet, which is 24 square feet short of the 3,000 square feet, or eight square feet short of the 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit. In order to allow the construction of a four-story mixed-use building with professional offices on the first floor and three dwelling units above. The subject lot is a substandard lot with the above dimensions. Had it been a typical City of Chicago lot with the standard width of 25 feet or 125 feet in lot depth, lot depth, the variation would not have been required, which is causing the hardship. So I'm going to ask a few questions to Ms. Smith. Can you please state your name?
Deborah Smith.
And is 1642 West North Avenue LLC the applicant for the variation?
Yes.
The subject property was purchased with the same substandard lot dimensions with an area of 2,976 square feet. And that is because the lot size is 24 square feet less than the minimum requirement the variation is required?
Yes.
We prepared an affidavit on your behalf, and if I were to continue to ask you questions, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
I have no further questions for this witness. Next, I'm going to ask Mr. Cox. Can you please state your first and last name?
Yes, Michael Cox.
Are you a licensed structural engineer in the state of Illinois?
I am.
Did you prepare the plans for the subject property seeking the variation today?
I did.
Is the variation needed because the lot measures 24 feet by 124 feet with a lot area of 2,976 square feet, which is 24 square feet short of the required minimum of 3,000 square feet?
Yes.
Had the lot been a typical City of Chicago standard lot size of 25 feet by 125 feet, the variation would not be required. Is that correct?
Correct.
Had the lot been one foot longer or one foot wider than the minimum lot area requirement would have been met and the variation would not be necessary, is that true?
That's true.
And is it true that the proposed building with the variation would comply with all other applicable zoning bulk regulations and meet the Chicago Building Code requirements because all the required building permits will be issued for the construction?
Yes.
We prepared an affidavit, and if I were to continue to ask you questions, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
It would.
I have no further questions for Mr. Cox. That's our case in chief, and we appreciate your time.
Question for Ms. Smith. Can you tell us what your relationship is to 1642 West North Avenue LLC?
I'm secretary.
Secretary. Any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 263-24-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Turner with offices in Elmhurst, Illinois, and I represent the applicant Ming Yang Corp. The applicant is currently leasing the subject property consisting of approximately 1,179 square feet of first-floor commercial space in the building commonly known as 3418 North Sheffield. The applicant seeks a special use to establish a nail salon that is located within 1,000 feet of an existing personal service use located in the B32 Neighborhood Commercial District. Yang Tao, to my immediate right, is the president and majority shareholder of the applicant and will manage the store. The applicant will offer eight to 10 manicure stations and approximately six pedicure chairs. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. As my first witness, I'd like to call Mr. Ryan. You've already recognized him as an expert. Joe, you visited the site and prepared a report regarding your opinions and conclusions for this special use, correct?
I did.
You also signed an affidavit summarizing your opinions and conclusions, which was submitted as part of the findings of fact?
Yes.
And the special use, all the required conditions have been satisfied in this case, required by the code for a special use?
Yes.
And it is your opinion that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the character, welfare, and/or value of property in the neighborhood and is consistent with the stated purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance? Is that correct?
Correct.
I have no further questions for Mr. Ryan. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Tao. Can you state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Yang Tao.
And you are the president and majority shareholder of Ming Yang Corporation?
Yes.
Okay, and you will manage the store, correct?
Yes.
And all the technicians will be licensed by the, properly licensed?
Yes.
And the hours of operation that I previously stated is correct?
Yes.
And you also signed an affidavit in this case that we submitted to the zoning board, correct?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, it would be consistent with the statements contained in your affidavit?
Yes.
I have no further questions for Mr. Tao.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
Definitely had to Google that one.
Yeah. Alright, while everyone is getting situated, I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 265-24-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a cannabis infuser facility, provided: One, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, CNR Holdings Grow LLC. Two, no retail sales, samples, or physical product displays or stock are allowed at this facility. Three, no cannabis dispensary, cannabis craft grower, nor cannabis processor activities are allowed at this facility under this special use permit. Four, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated June 21, 2024, version two, prepared by Maine Architecture, and the odor control plan dated February 1, 2024, revised June 20, 2024, prepared by Building Engineering Systems. Five, the details and final design for the odor control system and components, including but not limited to the size, type, and location of equipment, filters, rooftop mechanical units, and exterior system exhaust, et cetera, and details on the design and location of the airlocks, system layout, et cetera, are prepared by a qualified engineer and submitted for review and approval by Chicago Department of Public Health, CDPH, prior to issuance of any building permits. And six, a fully detailed written final odor control plan detailing the proposed operations, maintenance schedule, and proposed remedies to address any system failures, as well as any additional details requested by CDPH, prepared by a qualified engineer, is submitted for review and approval by CDPH prior to issuance of any building permits. Alright, everybody planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Barton, you have no objectors. You can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the commission, members of the board. For the record, my name is Timothy Barton with the law firm of Thomas R. Reins, Attorney at Law, LLC. I'm here representing CNR Holdings Grow LLC, which is the applicant in the matter of the special use for the property at 3300 West Franklin Boulevard. The applicant is proposing to establish and operate a cannabis infusion facility at 3300 West Franklin. A special use for cannabis infusion was approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals in February of 2024, earlier this year, for Big City Ventures Infusers LLC. Their license has since been transferred to the applicant. So the change in the license holder is the reason for this application, why we're here today. Um, there is no change in the plan or, uh, um, or additions to the building, uh...
What about, is it a change in the operators?
It, uh, we'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
Um, uh, the activity at the site will involve infusing THC oil and, or cannabinoids into gummies and beverages. No cannabis products will be dispensed from this site. Um, we have five witnesses available to testify this afternoon. Um, to my, to my right, on the behalf of the applicant, is Charles Ryan Wright. Um, to his right, Dan Farrell, our security consultant. Uh, let's see, Terry O'Brien, M A I appraiser, traffic, uh, George Kissel, uh, land planner, and our traffic consultant Javier Milan from K L O A Traffic Engineers. Also present, um, uh, second row is Cameron Coon, who's the project manager, if there are questions that he can help with. Um, with that, I'll call my first witness, um, Mr. Wright. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, uh, my name is Charles Ryan Wright, and my address is two, uh, two-six-four-nine Northeast Eighty-seventh Avenue, Vancouver, Washington, uh, nine-eight-six-six-two.
Thanks. Uh, the proposal under consideration today would allow C N R Holdings Grow to establish a cannabis infusing and packaging for the production of gummies and beverages. Is that, is that your understanding?
Yes.
And is it true that this past February, uh, the board granted a special use, Big City Ventures, uh, to prevent infusion at this location?
Yes.
And since the February approval, C N R Holdings Grow has acquired a state license, which will allow both infusion and craft grow at this location? Is that correct?
Yes.
And is it true that as a result of this change in ownership now, C N R Holdings has come to the board to establish the previously granted special use in its name?
Yes.
Ryan, um, I submitted your affidavit along with our findings to the board. Um, if I were to continue questioning you today, would those, would your answers be consistent with those, uh, statements and those documents?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Dan Farrell, who is our, um, security consultant.
Dan, for the record... Before, before we move on, let me ask the applicant. So what's going on with the operations here? Because there's a mention that we granted this special use already to a different license holder, and now it's been transferred to your company, correct?
So, uh, slightly incorrect, but on the...
Go ahead and...
Very near, near close.
Okay.
I, uh, my, my father and I, the partners in, in Big City Ventures LLC initially acquired an infusion license, um, and initiated the process. However, during the process, we realized that there were some limitations that the craft grow license would, would offer, as opposed to some of the limitations that the, you know, the state infusion license are allowing. So we, we purchased, my father and I, same ownership for both Big City Ventures and, uh, C N R Grow Holding LLC. But we, we purchased the craft grow license. We were, we were instructed by or advised by a state representative for the cannabis division, Bresch, uh...
Brewer.
Brewer, um, who said, "You should consider putting the infusion license on mothballs because there's no time bomb associated with those, and you should consider putting your craft grow license on this space that you have already had approved with the intention of actually getting the operational, the license operational before the time bomb deadline to open these licenses."
Okay.
So that was just a recommendation made by the state that we adopted.
But today, we're only dealing with the infusion license, or the infusion, the, the special use for the cannabis infusion, correct?
That's correct. We were, actually, we had, um, also submitted a craft grow application.
That you continued today?
And that we continued today. In, um, extended discussions with, uh, the Department of Planning and Development, we were advised that, uh, the cannabis cigarettes and the vape cartridges that, um, are also under consideration, uh, would have to go through the board as a cannabis processor use. So therefore, we had split that application so that the infusion would only cover beverages and gummies, and that, uh, the cannabis grow would cover the, um, the pre-rolls and the, and the vapes.
Okay, and I can see that Nancy Redzovich from the Department of Plan and Development has her hand raised. Uh, Nancy, before you begin, uh, please raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear?
I was sworn in earlier.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You were. Okay. And she's already been sworn in, and she would tell the truth anyway. So go ahead, Nancy.
Um, okay, so our understanding is a little bit different. Um, they were, this group, as we understand, it's the same group, were issued an infuser license in February of this year. And what they are coming forward to do today, as we understand, is to change that license from Smokey's to the new LLC name. And that there's no differences between what was, um, submitted in February for the infuser versus what is being submitted today for the infuser only, other than the name change. Our understanding is the reason is because the state license for the infuser is actually in the C N R Holdings name, not in the Smokey's name. With respect to the other pending applications that might be coming up, it is correct. The growing application, we recommended they continue that because we never received any sort of plans showing, I, um, showing growing, which is defined as cultivation, drying, curing, and, and packaging of the product. That is what we define growing as. Instead, what they had originally shown under the growing application was more in line with our definition for a processor, where they take the product that has already been grown, dried, and cultivated, they bring in the flowers, they put it in a rowing machine, and they make cigarettes. Similarly, they bring in the infused THC, um, liquid and simply insert it into the vape cartridges. So our expectation is that they wanted to move forward today to get the infuser re, reestablished under the correct current LLC name. The second step is they're planning to come forward again to amend this infuser application as well as start with the processor. Both of those applications have been filed. We haven't reviewed those yet, but those have been filed, and then come back later, which they continue today to October, come back later for the grow, which is actually going to be in a separate space within the same building.
Okay, so there's going to be three different uses ultimately. We're going to have infuser, processor, and then grower. Yes?
Craft grow license permits, under the state craft grow license definition, it permits the usage of the craft grow license for infusion, for, for, uh, extraction, as well as for growing. This initial pro, phase one, and we have contingent leases for more of the space, but phase one, we were recommended again by the state, um, Bresch Brewer, that we needed to expedite our process as quickly as possible and get this phase one open before we worry about designing and paying for the additional phase two, phase three, which would include additional uses under the craft grow license itself.
Okay, okay. Um, I think I get it. Um, and so the, so the last time you guys were before us, because I saw it in the plans too, there was, uh, references to Smokey's. That was a DBA of...
Just a DBA.
The, um, what's the name, big, uh...
Big City Ventures LLC is the, is the entity that's registered in Illinois that owns the infusion license that was zoning board approved.
So it's Big City Ventures, DBA Smokey's?
DBA Smokey's.
Okay. Um, all right, I get it now. Um, continue. Unless anybody else, does anybody else have any questions before we move on? Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks. Um, Dan, uh, yes, you gave your, uh, name and address. Thank you. Uh, and you have ten years' experience, um, in security, uh, for cannabis industry?
Actually, let me, let me just jump in again.
Sure.
Sorry. Um, so the application in February, was that for infusion?
It was a Big City Ventures LLC owns solely an infusion license, an infuser license in the state of Illinois. And then subsequently, a separate entity, C N R Grow Holdings LLC, um, did an asset purchase of a craft grow license. And so what we were doing is, is again, kind of saying, you know, putting this license on mothballs, and then this license has the usages of infusion within it.
Just has expanded, uh, expanded processes that we would like to do at some point down... They allow you to do more? The license that you have now allows you to do more?
Correct.
Okay, I got it. And so, um, as far as what was presented back in February, is this basically the same thing? Yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay, I get it. Um, I think, you know, for purposes of expediting this, why don't you just have everybody swear to their reports and affidavits?
Okay. And just for the record, these are the same, uh, witnesses from February.
Okay.
So, okay. Um, Dan, we submitted your affidavit, um, to the board. If you were to testify today, would your statements be consistent with the findings and conclusions in your affidavit?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Terrence O'Brien, for the record, and reassigned appraiser. Yes, my testimony would be the same that's been incorporated within my report.
Okay.
And the same is what I testified back in February, thereabouts.
George Kissel?
Yes, uh, George, for the record, uh, George Kissel, president of Oak Grant Kissel Associates, uh, licensed architect, certified planner, forty years' experience. Um, if I were to continue to testify, they would be consistent with the report filed.
And Javier Milan is the representative from K L O A, uh, previously Luay Abuna was here, but, um, essentially, it's the same report, um, taking, uh, the current factors into account.
Okay, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistent with that report?
Yes, I would.
Okay, and the board does recognize Mr. O'Brien's and Mr. Kissel's expertise. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, four thirty-nine twenty-three S seventy-six twenty-eight South Cottage Grove Avenue.
Hey, uh, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number four thirty-nine twenty-three S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval for the expansion of an existing tavern to establish an outdoor patio, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Murphy's Lounge twenty seventeen, DBA Blacks, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated April eighteen, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Berman Design. Uh, Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Harlan Powell. The law firm Powell Junior P.C., here in Chicago. Um, we are here today, uh, representing Murphy's Lounge LLC, excuse me, Murphy's Lounge twenty seventeen LLC. Um, as stated, we're seeking a special use for the premises located at seven-six-two-eight South Cottage Grove Avenue to establish a six hundred and, six hundred and seventy-square-foot outdoor patio, uh, immediately adjacent to the existing structure in the rear of the property. Um, the, uh, property houses an existing tavern and is located in a B three-dash-two community shopping district. Uh, the subject location in total is a seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-one square-foot lot improved with an existing two-story brick and masonry mixed-use building. Um, on the second floor, there are six currently unoccupied residential units. Uh, my client operates a one thousand two hundred and thirty-square-foot tavern, um, at this location on the first floor, and has done so since two thousand seventeen. Uh, it should be noted that, uh, Sean Freisen, the applicant representative who's seated to my right, uh, his family has owned and operated tavern at this location since approximately nineteen sixty-three. Um, it's our understanding that both the six ward alderman, William Hall, and the surrounding community, including two nearby churches, um, are in support of this process, uh, of this project and, um, support Mr. Freisen in his efforts to get the special use. Um, with that, I would call, uh, Sean Freisen. Would you please, uh, state your name and tell us where you live?
Sean Freisen, ninety-eight, Sean Freisen, ninety-eight thirty-seven, South Bell, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four three.
And you're the managing member of Murphy's Lounge LLC?
Yes.
Um, how long have you been operating, uh, Murphy's Lounge?
It's two thousand seventeen.
And if granted the special use for the, uh, outdoor, uh, patio, um, what would the hours of operation there be?
Noon to approximately eleven PM.
Um, you have, uh, submitted an affidavit in connection with your application, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, and if, uh, if you were to continue to testify here today, uh, would your testimony be substantially consistent with the affidavit that you previously submitted?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, our next witness is Kareem Masawir.
Yes.
And the board recognizes his expertise.
Thank you.
And Mr. Masawir, you were retained to investigate the property, the, the subject property here, uh, to determine whether it complies with the specialty standards of the city of Chicago. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you did conduct, uh, the, uh, inquiry and investigation on this property. Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And what were your conclusions?
That the subject site and its proposed operational meet all of the standards required for the approval of a special use application for the zoning board.
And I believe you also produced a, uh, written report and affidavit in support of those conclusions that was included in the applicant's, uh, application package, correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify here today, um, is it true that your testimony would be substantially similar to that which is contained in your affidavit and in your supporting report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, that concludes our case in chief, and of course, we're available for questions.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Case one forty-five twenty-four Z forty-four oh one South Burke.
All right, good afternoon. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much. My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
Jesse Kilgore Jr.
I'm Barbara Yerby Kilgore.
And, uh, Dr. Kilgore, um, you live at this address with your wife Barbara, is that right?
That's correct.
And how long have you lived there?
About two and a half years.
And you moved from Detroit, uh, to become residents of our fine city, is that right?
That is correct.
And i- in the backyard, there were certain, um, things that were already there... And in the backyard, there were certain things that were already there, a steel deck, is that right?
That's correct.
And then you had some crime issues that you were worried about, and actually incidents, and so you wanted to enforce your carport and do some work back there. And when you went to get a permit for that, the city raised this existing deck there, is that right?
That is correct.
And so you hired an architect and you have done as-built plans for that existing steel deck, and you're asking the board to grant a variance to allow that to continue to exist as it existed when you got there. And if they grant it, it's your understanding you'll be in full compliance, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And with my help, you wrote out a witness statement and tried to address all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were continuing to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, your witness statement, is that right?
That's correct.
And the lady to your right, will you tell the board who you are?
I'm his wife, his better half.
And is there anything you'd like to add to his testimony?
He's going to be telling the truth, let's get this done. We want to be in compliance, we love Chicago, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And the gentleman at the end, will you tell us who you are?
Hello, I'm Samuel Burke, I'm the project designer from Senga Architects.
And this deck actually allows people go out the existing door, is that right?
One of the functions of the current deck is the rear degress to the first floor, yes.
And if it were to be removed, the door would go nowhere, is that right?
Correct, the door would not have a location to degress.
Okay. And it's all an existing condition?
That is correct.
That you've now drawn. And if the board sees fit to grant this variance, their home, their yard will be in full compliance, is that right?
That is correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. If you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Correct.
That's our case.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Musawir's expertise. I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. For calendar number one sixty twenty-four S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to allow the expansion of an existing ground-floor tavern to establish an outdoor tavern patio grade level and convert the second-floor residential unit and garage into accessory tavern uses for offices, break room storage, and laundry at second floor, and tavern storage with parking and garage, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, the forty-six twenty-one Club LTD DBA Max's place; two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated May thirty-one twenty-twenty-four, all prepared by Lee Ann Newsden's; and, three, the second floor and garage may not be used for direct tavern purposes, service of alcoholic liquor for consumption on the premises, and any proposal to open access to the second floor and garage to customers of the tavern will require submission of an amended special use application and review and approval of such changes by the zoning board of appeals. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Warren Silver, Silver Law Office, P C. We represent the applicant, the forty-six twenty-one Club Limited, doing business as Max's Place. There are two officers and two shareholders of the applicant. One of them, Brett Swinson, is not here today. With me to my right is Micah Hilgendorf, the corporate secretary and shareholder. Mr. Swinson and Hilgendorf are also the sole managers and members of forty-six twenty-one Clark LLC, the owner of the property. Also with me here today, as you noted, is our expert witness, Kareem Musawir. The property at forty-six twenty-one North Clark is in a B three-two zoning district, where a tavern is allowed as a special use and an outdoor patio at grade is allowed as a permitted use. But in this case, because it is serving the tavern, it is treated as an expansion of the tavern and requires a special use. Now, Max's Place is a dive bar, as it were, that's been there since time immemorial. And Mr. Hilgendorf and Mr. Swinson acquired the corporation that owned the bar and then formed the LLC to acquire the building in which the bar was located. There's a lease between the bar, covering the first floor, grade level, between the bar corporation and the building ownership LLC. And there had been an apartment some time ago on the second floor that was vacant when the applicant was acquired by its principals. And at this time, they would like to convert that upstairs area to office use and laundry facilities and other support facilities, all which are permitted uses in a B three-two. And the purpose is to serve not just the tavern, but they also own several other tavern businesses in other parts of the city as well. And they would conduct the, basically, the management business from that second floor location and then also use the garage for storage for this tavern, as well as for their other tavern businesses. There would be no tavern use, only the corporate management stuff and support services on the upstairs. And with that, I will turn to our first witness, Mr. Micah Hilgendorf. Please state and spell your name for the record.
Micah Hilgendorf, M I C A H, H I L G E N D O R F.
And you're one of the sole shareholders and officer of the applicant and also manager and member of the property owner LLC, correct?
Correct.
And was my summary consistent with, and correct in your?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. And this is not your first tavern, as I had mentioned? You have three other taverns, can you just list them?
Yes, I have three other taverns. The North End, North Halsted, been there for forty years. The Lucky Horseshoe, Belmont and Halsted, is thirty-five years old. And Atmosphere in Andersonville is twenty years old.
Okay, so you have substantial experience in operating taverns, correct?
Yes, I've been in it for twenty years now.
And the taverns primarily serve Chicago's LGBTQ plus community, are open and welcome to everybody, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, and you have sports leagues and a lot of community involvement out of these taverns, right?
Yeah, I'm standing on the shoulders of the people that started the bars, and it was important for them to stay in the gay community and involved in it. So we sponsor twenty-five volleyball teams, three different sports leagues. I sit on the board of North Halsted, try to stay involved with the different chambers and whatnot.
And you bought Max's Place about a year and a half ago, and since then, you've fixed up the building, new facade and windows, new roof, new rear porch, security cameras, and improved lighting, correct?
Correct.
And now you want to put in an outdoor patio because of demand from your customers? And many of the customers are from the neighborhood?
Yes, absolutely, as am I, I only live a few blocks from it.
Okay. And can you talk about your hours of operation for the board, please?
The bar is open from noon until two during the week, noon to three on Saturdays. We post hours, closing at midnight, just so we can close early if it's appropriate. The, without upsetting anyone, I don't mind staying open late if there's a crowd, but I don't necessarily want that person coming in at one-thirty in the morning.
And the hours are roughly consistent with other taverns and restaurants that are in this block, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you'll keep those same hours once the patio opens, they're not going to change?
Yes.
Okay. And what kind of outdoor lighting are you going to have at the patio?
We have outdoor string lighting, smart lighting, that changes colors and whatnot. So it's not too bright for the neighbors.
Okay. And do you expect any substantial impact on parking or traffic in the neighborhood from the addition of an outdoor patio at this location?
No, it's a pretty walkable street, and there's two major bus stops right there, and the L is not too far away.
Okay. And you mentioned that with your tavern operational experience, you can control late-night noise because you've got a great customer base and you know how to talk to them and keep things calm and close early, as you said, if things get out of hand, so that it's not an issue?
Yes.
Okay. And my description of what you're going to be doing upstairs and in the garage, there would be no tavern activities at all, strictly business management and support services? That was all correct? Okay. And your partner in this business, Mr. Swinson, prepared and filed an affidavit for this board. Have you had a chance to read that?
Yes.
And if you were to continue testifying, would your testimony be consistent with Mr. Swinson's affidavit?
Yes, it would.
And also the proposed findings of fact that we prepared and submitted to this board on your behalf?
Yes.
Thanks. No further questions for you.
And that was very thorough, so I think you can just have Mr. Musawir swear to his affidavit and report.
Yeah. And so, that's as I intended. Mr. Musawir, you engaged to perform a special use analysis, submitted a land use report and a supporting affidavit to this board, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue testifying here, you would testify essentially to the contents of your report and your affidavit, yes?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Nothing further.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, sir, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Counselor.
Surprise, surprise, we're out at three o'clock.
Amazing. I was just telling Commissioner Soto, don't get too used to this, it's not like this every time.
Welcome, Commissioner. My name is John Pikarski. I'm an attorney with offices at fifty-five West Monroe Street. And this afternoon, I'm happy to represent Adolfo Orozco, who is seated to my right and who owns the property at twenty-four forty-five West Twenty-Fourth Street. When he bought it, it was a complete wreck. And he has full intention of a complete rehab, including a new facade, including a third floor, including a front porch. And in order to accomplish this, we are going to need a series of variations, it's already built. It was an existing wreck that he's rehabbed. We're going to need a front setback variation, a west side variation, a combined side yard variation. And if allowed by this board, a front porch will be placed on the front of the building, and the entire rehab is going to be completed. It will be for Mr. Orozco's family. With that, I'd call Adolfo. Please state your name and address, sir.
Adolfo Orozco, thirteen twenty-one South Sixty-First Avenue in Cicero.
And you're going to move from Cicero into Chicago?
Correct.
And you are going to, while you are in the process of doing some of the rehab that didn't require a permit, and now you're finishing up the rehab, is that correct?
Correct.
And it's my understanding that you purchased the property for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Correct.
And you're going to spend about two hundred and seventy-five thousand in rehabbing, is that correct?
Correct.
And you intend to move your family into this house?
Yes.
Now, in your opinion, will the proposed variations that we need in any way injure the surrounding property values as a result of what you're doing?
Sure, sure.
No, it won't injure the?
Oh, injure, I thought you were going to say. Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions.
All right, let me jump in here just a little bit. Sir, so, did you, were you? Strike that. Did you do some of this work before you obtained a permit? Is that why, why are you here?
I obtained the permit. For some reason, they left the back porch as a wooden porch when I did the rehab, the whole building. But when we started demoing, it had a lot of termite damage and stuff, so we ended up taking it down and doing the back end with a brick, as the whole building. And that's why we're here, because the inspector wanted it to get revised. And then since it was built on the same property line, they wanted to do all these variations and stuff like that. But I had started the project, I had plans and permits for it, just the back part of it.
Okay. Okay. And this is a, it was an existing building that you're rehabbing, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take it under advisement, thank you.
Okay.
Have a good evening and a good weekend.
Good evening, good afternoon.
We can play golf yet.
Okay, I move that we convene in a closed session pursuant to Section two C four of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
I vote yes for enclosed session. Okay, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito. Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 26024S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 26124Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 26324S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 26524S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 490, 43923S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 14524Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 16024S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21224Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its May 17, 2024 regular meeting. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito. Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, the written resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great weekend.